Good morning! This is for my vlog, but... But the episode came out yesterday. I wanna see if I was on there. Okay, I got it to work. Now I just have to see if I'm actually in it. Wait, I'm not in there yet, but look. Oh my god, I'm gonna pass out. I don't know what happened, but did you see me? Wee! Kylan's coming. We're about to go thrifting. We'll kind of get his nose pierced and then we're gonna go thrifting. I took my seat covers off. I see. So, I'm getting my... Can you focus on me? Like, stop looking. I'm getting my nose pierced. Tati is in the car.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. When I first got it pierced, I had it for three weeks sitting at my job.
That one always had good stuff. I always find at least one thing. I've seen my pants fit. I got these jeans because I want to change them into shorts. But I have to see if they even fit. But we're gonna find out tomorrow. If they're too big, that's fine. I'll just wear a belt and then I'm gonna wear like this. I plan my outfits for work as if like my job matters. But my outfits be cute though. People will be dragging my fit. People have been watching me though. Good morning! Good morning! I have not vlogged or been active on social media, I feel like in so long. Which is kind of not true because I just posted. Anyway, you guys are not asked for this as soon as you click on this video. Um, what is today? Today is Tuesday. Today is a lovely Tuesday day and I have class today. So, I'm actually, I think session, I think I'm gonna leave in a few... Sorry, I'm gonna leave in a few minutes because it's raining really hard. I didn't go to class last week because it was raining very hard. So this week, I do want to go to class, so I won't miss any more material. But I have to get ready first, so... But it's so cold! I have been so inactive. I'll just say on Instagram, I've been really inactive on Instagram as of late. And I feel bad, but I also don't feel bad. Because I've taken some pressures off of myself in regards to social media. But I feel bad because I keep on getting followers and because they're finding... My content is doing really well on Instagram. And which I think is great and I'm happy that you guys like it. But when I get followers from my content, I feel bad because I don't post as frequently. I have a lot of content planned, actually. Oh, you can't see me. Yeah, I have a lot of content planned. It's just a matter of me actually filming it, so yeah. It is so freaking cold in our house, but I have the door open because my mom is being a package. Oh my god, look, you guys. I'm trying to think. I posted, oh, even though I've said I've been not consistent or inactive on social media, I've actually been extremely active on YouTube. I have posted a video every week for the last like three or four weeks and I feel so proud of myself. So yeah, if you ever miss my face on Instagram or something, just go to my YouTube channel. Freaking, it's so cold. It's so cold. Let me find an outfit to wear. And let me enjoy it still. Hey! Let me show you my outfit. That's pretty huge. Oh my god, oh, my car warms up. It's the outfit right now. Taking these seat covers off of my car, I'm so tired of these seat covers. It's just because my seats are so effing dirty. I was sleeping a little bit earlier, but I didn't because I just didn't. And of course, I wanted to make a video before I left. I always wanna make videos at the most inconvenient times. Anyway, I'm going to a cafe to... I really wanna edit, but I feel like I should study a little bit. But I'm most likely gonna edit. Just to try to get a heads up on this video, just so I can start filming other content. Because that's what happens is, you guys know, you guys know the drill. I always film a lot of stuff and then it takes me forever to edit. Things don't come out. So I'm like, maybe I should just edit until class and then I'll just wing it during class. Let me see. Check, do you see? Check, Korean, how do you say? Check, Korean, how do you say? It's usually because check. Check, okay. Thank you. Ah, it's so cold! Hi! So, I just left the cafe, as you can see. I was trying, I tried to speak Korean towards the end of my visit there. Because I'm like, girl, you've been coming to this cafe for how many years? It's a Korean cafe and you just don't wanna speak Korean? Okay, cool. Even though all the workers there speak Korean, even the foreigner or the non-Korean person waitress, but you still wanna speak? Okay, cool. So I finally spoke Korean. And of course, when I speak the Korean, I mess up. I don't mess up, but it's like, you know, I'm nervous. My hands were shaking. I don't know if it's because I had two cups of coffee and only some fries today. But yeah, I was nervous. Yeah, because they all speak Korean so well. Well, what, they're natives, but even the non-native, she just speaks Korean so well. So anyway, but I spoke with my little Korean and then I asked for the check. You guys heard. But the girl, she was like, nah. Probably, or she was looking at me like, oh my god, yes, little foreigner, like, look at you speaking that Korean. And I'm like, girl, it's because you. She motivates me to want to learn how to speak Korean because she just speaks it so freaking well. It is a beautiful rainy day in the L of the A. I'm about to go to class right now. I am... Oh, cold! I'm freezing. But yeah, can you hear my voice? I'm so shaky right now. I don't know why. But it's probably because I had a lot of coffee today. Like, my hands are shaky and my voice is shaky. Okay, let me drive so I can pay attention and not get into a car accident. Please, please send the word "for" to the girl. The weather is hot, right? Is it raining a lot? Is it raining a lot right now?
Uh, no.
No? Is it raining?
A little.
A little? It's raining a little. How was the afternoon in the afternoon? Did it rain a lot?
Yes.
Did it? Rained a lot. Eh, it rained a lot. That's the weather. Okay. We practiced the weather today. So, then we have our last lesson, chapter 4. So next is going to be last week. And then I have a little bit sad news. We can play Yonori next week. Because on the second floor, there is some display, so there's no space. Then we'll practice together. So, is there a support? Or? Is there a support? Or? Then we'll practice together. Go. Go. Or? Is there a support? Go. Meet. Meet. Or? Meet. Do. Do. Or? Do. Do. Play. Is there a support? But... Do. That's it. Play. Play. Or? Play. Play. Is there a support? Or? Or? Eat. 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 Read. Read. Eh. Read. Read. Grab. 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 Hear. So, or? There's gonna be. But... Wow. So, you need to... The... The... Do. So, do. Do. Read. 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 So, I turned on the radio. Second, the teacher. Do. Go. Eh, okay. Okay. Second, the teacher. Okay. Then, please ask the teacher. Gina, please. What do you learn recently? Read. Eh. Well? Do. 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 It means like two or two four. Do. Do? Tati, please. Tati, what do you learn?
Um, I learn to cook.
Why?
Um, I learn to cook with friends.
Eh, okay.
Kate, what do you learn recently?
I learn to cook.
Why?
I learn to cook with the teacher.
Eh, okay. Kate, please ask me.
Teacher.
You guys, okay, hi! Class is over. Why did it take me till the almost end of class? Like, I'm talking like my semester or the end of the 12 weeks, whatever weeks. And tell me why I just now realized that I could have been just recording on my phone. Because I actually got cooked of class this time. And I'm like, why did I not do that for the entire 12 weeks? Why did I like, I... Whatever, you're only stupid. But you got to see some clips of me in class a little bit, me speaking, me sounding tragic. I was really shaky in class and I was shaky in class because I had a lot of coffee and I didn't... My first meal of the day was at like 10 this morning. It is currently 9. And I had two cups of coffee at the cafe. So, and my hands, like, my hands were, I couldn't even write. I couldn't even take notes properly because I was shaking so much. Um, so yeah, don't be like your ownie. Like, drink a lot. Drink? Drink. Eh, drink a lot. Don't be like your ownie. Cough. Don't cough. Drink a lot. I'm editing right now. We went to the store earlier and I got a few things that I needed. I got some socks and stuff like that. Um, and I got some shrimp because I want to make shrimp kimchi bokkeumbap. Instead of spam, because I don't know if I said it already, but I'm a pescatarian again. Or honestly, I'm not gonna say it. Because I did say if I go eat Korean food and if I feel like it, and it has, like, if the meal has meat in it, I'm gonna eat it. But, huh? These are the gushers. They're frozen ones.
Is that better?
Actually, no, because it tastes... It's not bad. Did you try one? Try it. Oh my god, it's frozen. Oh, kachakamun. You see how it's like, it's like, it tastes like ice at the first start? But I'm trying to edit. This study vlog is gonna be out. Um, I'm trying to get this edited before Sunday. I don't know if you guys know, I have been doing so freaking good with YouTube. I think I've been posting for like three weeks straight or four weeks straight. Um, let me see. Technically, six. I've been uploading every week on YouTube. Anyways, um, yeah, I have been on time with my uploads for six weeks straight, which is kind of crazy. Like, that's probably the most... It's probably the most that I've ever done. So, everyone say, ah, 잘했어, 나씨, 잘했어, 언니. Oh my god, I never heard it, kind of. But yes, um, 어제, oh, 어제 한국어, 한국어 소원이 있을, 있어서요. 그래서, uh, 그 소원이 괜찮아요. 근데 저, um, 저... I was just like, fine. My class was fun. I was fine. Um, as I said yesterday, I got footage finally, so I get to see a little glimpse of my class, a little glimpse of how I speak. But the next class is gonna be our last class and that is the day that we also have to sign up for the next... The next, if you wanna call it a semester, the next session, um, it's next week. So, Sophie, please be quiet. Go! Anyways, um, yeah, so I am trying to figure out which class I'm supposed to be in. Because everyone in my class, they're gonna take the art class over again because I think... Like, I don't know, whatever. I'm honestly confused about what happened with the classes. But I need to figure out which class I'm gonna sign up for, for the next little semester and then, um... Gimme paw. Gimme paw. Oh my good girl. My girl is so good when she get my paw. 그렇지. Gimme your other paw. Thank you, baby. Gimme your other foot. Sophie say 안녕. 안녕. 안녕하세요. You guys, I'm about to make shrimp kimchi bokkeumbap. Oh my god, this is side note, first of all. I bought this big ass thing of kimchi from H Mart. This is, this brand of kimchi is the best brand ever. Anyone has any different opinions, fight me. It's so good! My mom and I and my brother, we went to Target today and we saw that they had these Lucky Charm cookies. Uh, America. That's good. Oh my god. So, I finished making the shrimp kimchi bokkeumbap. Kyokki. 근데 I put way too much kimchi juice in there, so I made it mushy. It was doing so good. And then all of a sudden, I was like, oh, it's a little dry, let me add more. And then now it's freaking... It's a little mushy. But I'm still gonna eat it because I made it. But I'm making an egg to go on top of it rotten now. I'm watching David, so if you hear anything crazy, it's him. 잘 먹겠습니다. Does that look appetizing? Probably not. But is it actually pretty good? Yeah, I wish I made it spicier, honestly. I probably should have added more gochujang in there. So I saw this really cute jacket off of Mango that I wanna buy. I wanna show you guys. I look really gross right now. Oh my god, if you hurt my stomach, no you didn't. It's so cute. Isn't that cute? Isn't that cute? Oh my god, I want it so bad. And I'm gonna buy it. And it's on sale. It's so crazy because I've been wanting to go shopping, so I want new clothes. But the funny thing is, like, my desire to buy clothes at H and M and places like that is not here right now. I really wanna go thrifting, which is like... I'm proud of myself, but I'm also like, why? I think because recently, I've been having some really good thrifting days. So I wanna just like get more things, you know? Why hello? Don't mind me. I'm taking some of my braids out to redo them because they're getting old. But I've been trying to get on, um, this video. This video, like the video that my classmates were in. I've been trying to click on it to watch it for so long. 한국에서 간장계절을 먹고 싶어요?
간장계절?
Cute! Okay, so, I look crazy a little. I mean, you guys saw it, but, so basically, I'm on, I was like, what? I'm on YouTube Korea? So basically, um, that was like it. We filmed a lot more than what they shown. But I kinda understand why they didn't put a lot of stuff in. Honestly, content 못 떠고요. I don't care. I still had a lot of fun. And it was just really cool. It was a really cool experience. But that was it! And it was just really cool. It was a really cool experience, but that was it. Ah, my god. Korean song, me. Just kidding. Hi, guys. I thought about just vlogging because I'm about to make strawberries. I'm not gonna make strawberry, strawberries, but I bought chocolate-covered strawberries. Or I'm gonna make white chocolate-covered strawberries cuz that is my favorite snack. Is it healthy? Probably not, but I love it. Also, I did my hair yesterday. It was like an impulse to take my old braids out and to have new long braids, so here we are. Just call me the black Rapunzel. Excuse me, thank you. Whoa, mommy. Now, I did a little baby workout. I did some yoga cuz my body has been very tense. And my hands are ashy, don't look. And, um, what else did I say? My mom and my brother and I went to go get lunch.
Are you ready? I'm ready.
No. Um, but right now. Uh, yeah, if you're getting me, look, yeah. Well, yeah, but, um, right now, I'm about to draw. I need to practice, AKA, on how to draw because I'm working on something. I don't know what I should tell you guys. I don't know, but just know, I'm working on something so freaking exciting, you guys. I can't even like I'm so excited. I'm so excited. So I have to learn how to draw. Um, I don't have to, but I should because of what I want. I wanna be able to like draw it. Um, it, once you figure out what I'm doing, it'll make more sense. I don't know what I'm gonna tell you guys. Maybe wanna have like the website up? Maybe, I don't know. I don't know. We'll see. I filmed like eleven videos a few days ago and I have to edit all of them so I can get them scheduled to upload. So, yes. Uh, yeah. Oh, I am, uh, I'm gonna start to learn a new language. I know, I hear your questions. You're like, you don't even speak Korean that well. I know, it's a lot of. Then I need to, I don't need to learn this language by long this language cuz I'm gonna visit, um, this country. Which country is it? Italy, oh my goodness. So your ownie is gonna learn Italian. Yep, I am gonna start to learn Italian. I don't know when, if I can get into my old like college, then maybe it'll be in the fall. Who knows? I don't know. I haven't figured out yet, but just know, I'm starting to learn Italian. And, and Korean, I put some time. Yep. My jacket came. 안녕. You guys, look, I know, I haven't vlogged in, in a while, but my package is key. Hubish. I can't even see where it's from cuz she's attacked me. I know, we're almost in summer, but it's like cold. Oh. Oh, good thing I didn't get, oh, see the pockets for this one? Way better. Those were.
Did you change size?
Yeah, medium. I checked out my size. I know, instead of being an actual.
Demon.
Stop!
Demon. Backup demon. Get away from me, demon.
Stop! Do you hear me? Do you want one? Uh, I'm gonna respond. Did you see my new jacket? I'm about to have a, about to have a heat stroke.